This is the Town of Fairfield's Community Development Block Grant Program, year forty-nine, public hearing. This is the first of two scheduled public hearings. We're meeting tonight on March first, 2023, in the Old Town Hall Conference Room and via Zoom. We have a number of people in attendance, and I'll go around the room and let everyone introduce themselves. But for the record, I'm Mark Barnhart. I'm the Director of Community Economic Development. Also joined by Sonia Hine, who is our Grants Coordinator for the town. And most of you already know, having worked with her before. And with that, I'll let folks in the room introduce themselves, and then I'll have folks online also introduce themselves.
My name's Caitlin. I am part of Wake Men Boys and Girls Club. I'm the Program Director for McKinley Elementary After School Program and Before Care.
Super. Thank you.
Hi, Amy Turner. I'm the Executive Director for Team Work Gang and Co.
Oh, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too.
Okay, go ahead, Michael.
Hi, I'm Michael Sinzaro. I'm the Transition Coordinator for Fairfield Public Schools.
Michael, Maggie? You're on mute, Maggie. Sorry.
Maggie Donegan from the Center for Family Justice.
Thank you for joining, Maggie. And Lori?
Lori Rudifer, Jewish Senior Services. I'm a grant writer there, and this is my first go-around with CDBG in Fairfield.
Perfect. I'm going to share my screen now, hopefully, so that folks online can also see. So as I said, this is our, whoops, our public hearing, our first of two public hearings on the Community Development Block Grant Program. So we've gone around and introduced ourselves, and again, welcome. I'm going to provide a very short overview of the Community Development Block Grant Program for those of you who are not as familiar with the ins and outs of this program. And then we'll open it up. The most important part is to hear from all of you in terms of the needs you're seeing within your organizations and within the community at large, and how we might be able to help. So with that, I'll just continue. So the Community Development Block Grant Program is administered through the Department of Housing and Urban Development. The town has been a participant in this program, an entitlement community, which means that we receive federal funds without having to apply competitively, based on this population and other factors. So we do receive funds annually from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, subject to the appropriation process in Washington, which is always a little bit unpredictable. And we've been a participant since the inception, so forty-nine years, and this is program year forty-nine. The nice thing about this Community Development Block Grant Program is it does provide communities with a lot of flexibility, more so than other grant programs, to address what they see as local community and housing needs within each of their jurisdictions. Always a catch, though. So the program is to create viable communities by providing decent housing, a suitable living environment, and expanded economic opportunities. And the principal aim is to address the needs of those folks of low to moderate income. We have to put together a five-year plan. It's a consolidated plan. We've done that a few years back. So I think we're in year four.
Year four.
This will be year four. So all a consolidated plan is, is a multi-year strategy. It talks about the needs that we see within the community. It's based on a lot of engagement with groups such as yours, as well as the public at large. And it really guides the allocation of federal dollars over the five-year timeframe. Each year, we go through preparing an annual plan, which is really how we're going to spend federal dollars to address the needs that were identified in the consolidated plan during that given year. So in terms of funding, it's been fairly stable, but we have seen a slight decrease. And we just received word from HUD that we can expect to receive slightly less than what we had last year. So we're looking at $492,327 in entitlement dollars. What's important, now, there are some guidelines in terms of how we allocate those dollars. And for those of you on the call, most of you are probably going to apply under the Public Service category, which is limited to fifteen percent of our overall grant, plus any program income dollars that we might have. So about $492,000 is around $75,000. We allocated $82,000 this past year. So we do get some small amount of program income that we can put towards the program, but there is limited resources and obviously a great amount of need out there. So just bear that in mind. In terms of eligibility, there's one of three national objectives. There demonstrate that we benefit through the program activity, persons of low to moderate income, preventing or eliminating slums or blight typically doesn't apply in the case of Fairfield. We have had some issues where we might get some blight designation, but it's not like an urban redevelopment area. And then urgent need, we just had one with the pandemic, but those are typically natural or man-made disasters. So again, most of our activities or programs that we find fall into the first bucket.
I'm not seeing a screen, so I'm not sure.
Are you not?
No.
Is everyone else seeing a screen? How is that not happening?
Yes, I have it.
Yeah, I can see your screen.
All right, so it's just me. I don't know.
You know what? I will continue to talk, and then I will share this after the fact with all of you. So technology, hey. So we do have some areas of town that are designated as low-modern income block groups or census tract areas. They have to fall in a certain amount of concentration, and so those are identified on the map and by block group. Again, most of you probably serve populations that are presumed to be of low moderate income. If you serve disadvantaged youth, or seniors, or disabled folks, typically those meet our presumed benefit category, but there are instances where that's not the case. And Carol has joined us, too. Thank you very much. Carol Martin is here for the housing.
Good, how are you? Nice to see you, too.
You just missed all my great talk here, so.
I've heard it before, but I know you're getting better as the years go on.
Yeah, you know, practice makes perfect, right. So as I mentioned, typically, we have to show how the project meets one of those three national objectives. We also, there's a broad range of eligible activities, and there are some things that are specifically ineligible for funding. We won't dwell on that, but if you have questions, it's in the application packet. But beyond that, we'll look at your applications and determine how they relate back to the needs that were identified in the consolidated plan. We want to look at how we're, the capacity of the applicant, how you're leveraging other dollars. Those types of things all factor into our determinations. But we try to provide some funding to a lot of different groups that are doing good work here in town. So in terms of schedule, we're doing the first of two public hearings this evening. The applications are due, is that right, the thirteenth? Okay, thirteenth. Did I get that right?
I don't know if the thirteenth.
I believe that is right.
It probably is. Yeah, yeah.
So they're available online. You can also get a digital copy from Sonia. The second public hearing will be on the third of May. That typically is at the point at which we've made some preliminary recommendations in terms of funding. Then we will proceed to the Board of Selectmen on the fifth of June and to the RTM later that month for their final approval. We do need to submit to HUD forty-five days before the end of the program year, which is around the sixteenth of August. We typically try to give ourselves a little bit of a day, a little bit of a wait. Even though you can now submit electronically, which is a great thing. We used to have to drive up to Hartford and deliver it.
Really?
Yeah, we used to do. Before you were here.
Mail, mail. When I started it, I did fed up.
Well, there were occasions where we were like really down to the wire.
Oh, okay. We had to drive it up there.
So we were, you know, driving it up there. So the program year is, the federal fiscal year is October first. So we'll typically, even though we'll have this information into them, we may not have an actual commitment back from HUD until sometime in November. So we can't actually commit the dollars to you until such time as HUD gets back to us with an agreement. So just bear that in mind as well. And with that.
Did you say the application, oh, sorry. Did you say the application deadline was March the thirteenth? I had a little glib there for some, my apologies.
March thirteenth, yes.
March thirteenth.
March thirteenth.
And so on the application.
It's a pretty straightforward application. Again, if you're running a little bit late, let us know. We can certainly work with you. We're not, we're not.
We're not sticklers.
On that. So, but please try to get it in on time.
Absolutely.
That's my contact information, as well as Sonia, who you know. And with that, I'll close this portion and open it up again for comments. And maybe just, I'll go around the room here first and then turn to those online. So I'd like to speak first, although you're not shy, so.
Yeah, really, my attendance tonight is really just to say how wonderful this program has been. And talking, I know I'm preaching to the choir, but with the ripple effects of the pandemic, we're seeing a lot more folks entering the homeless system. We have a lot more folks calling our offices, seeking housing. So I mean, this is such an important program, and I'm really just here to support getting the money out the door because, right, it can't happen fast enough for the families in Fairfield that are in need, you know?
And the other thing that we do have is, you know, an obligation, not just to meet the needs as quickly as we can, but HUD will make sure that you get the money out the door. Because you're not allowed to hold on to it, hoard it, and put it into a bucket that you're. So they will do a timeliness report and make sure that we have spent the money quickly.
And you and Sonia have done such a great job over the years.
We don't want to be, we don't want to be in HUD's, their bad sign. Because that's when, as you know, Carol, that's when you face possible reduction in your grant funds over time. So we don't want to do that, so.
Anyway.
Thank you, Carol. And there's Herb from our Affordable Housing Committee as well.
So, yeah, I mean, I agree. So I've been on this job for two years, and this program is incredible. I really do applaud how well it's run and the interactions. I know you guys have been frustrated at times with the timing of things, but you're so on top of it. It makes it easy. As a public service activity provider, it's interesting that the pandemic shut everything down and created all kinds of problems, but then like opening back up. I mean, now that people are out and about and really looking for that interaction, I mean, we just, like, we can't expand what we're doing fast enough to meet the needs of people as they're coming out of it. And then obviously, the ramifications of absorbing this new re-entry into the world, especially for a mar population of folks with disabilities. So it's an interesting process, both the shutting down of and then now the reopening of. But just very grateful to be here and glad to just be listening to all the folks doing great work in the community.
I mean, this is my first meeting. I can tell you, with McKinley, Wake Men opening up the new program last year, the same kind of thing. We can't hire enough staff to really get, right now, we have one hundred and twenty children in the after-school program, and we have, I think, maybe ten kids on the waitlist and growing. So trying and half the battle with that is, we could probably take on more kids. I could probably hire more staff. But the emotional effects that COVID has had on these children are really, really high, and there's not a lot of support from the mental illness aspect of it. You know, a lot of kids faced abuse while they were home, you know, because they weren't going to school. They weren't doing much. So we're getting a lot of children who can't express themselves. A lot of kindergartners and first graders who don't, they were wearing masks for so long. So like, now they're coming in, and they're just buck wild, which is great. I love seeing them crazy and everything. But with that becomes issues, and trying to get paras for the after-school program for kids who really need that redirecting immediately isn't there. So we're struggling with the, you know, the emotional side effects with this. I think I can speak slightly, sorry? I thought I heard something. And I think I can speak for both clubs as well, you know? All the kids are going through it. So they love the program. They never want to leave, you know? You have kids, one kid was crying, pointing at the door, pointing at their parent. I'm like, God, I have to call DCF. She doesn't want to go home with her dad, you know? And it was because she didn't want to leave. So she got upset with her dad. But so they don't want to leave. So that's great. But that's kind of all I really have for you guys.
Thank you. Michael, would you like to kick us off for the folks joining us on Zoom?
Sure. Absolutely. I mean, I just want to continue what everybody is saying. The two of you are absolutely amazing, and that's coming from somebody who came into the role new last year, and he plays somebody who did the job for like four hundred years. So the last transition coordinator was in the district forever, and I took on the role and was a bit nervous with all the different components. But Sonia kind of really made things so pleasant, and she always is pleasant, even when I have stupid questions, and I know some of them are. So you guys have been amazing.
Yeah.
There are no stupid questions.
So a few of them have been, Sonia. It's okay. You can admit it. So I mean, the overall, I mean, the grant, to be completely honest with you, has been really a life-saving component to our program. Being a transition coordinator, you know, one of the programs that I'm partly responsible for is the community partnership. And we meet the needs of eighteen- to twenty-year-olds, and they come from special needs. So many of these individuals are intellectually disabled, and we educate them to the day before their twenty-second birthday. And our program is called the Student Stipend Program. And it's literally part of their IEP document for us to provide banking services to them. So when you, sometimes you have good days and bad days, and a lot of times, education, you know, it goes unrewarded. But like, when I see the smile and a picture of a kid's face when they get this paycheck, it really provides just pure inspiration to see what their hard work is. Because we provide internships for them through this program in the community from, you know, to more than seventeen different businesses that are part of our partnership. And it's just amazing to be able to provide this to the students. One of the struggles that we are facing is, if we look back just a few years ago, our program, we're providing this type of stipend to about thirteen students. Last year, we increased to about fifteen, sixteen, and this year, we are now, started the year at twenty, now we're at eighteen students. And we're paying the students about three dollars per hour, which is not a lot, but they're still ecstatic. But our program is going to be having, we're having an increase to about twenty-six students next year. So when I say that this is really a life-saving portion of our program, we wouldn't be able to provide this legal component for these students without the grant. So it really has been life-saving, but we are facing an aspect that our students are going from eighteen to twenty-six students next year just because of the needs of our students, and there are two different high schools coming into our program. So I present that to you guys just in consideration, because the program and grant has been so important. But we, again, are going to be looking at an increase to students coming in. And this has just been an amazing component. So I can't thank the two of you guys enough.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you.
I'll go next to Maggie.
Okay. You have supported the Center for Family Justice for a number of years. If you, the other folks here don't know, the Center for Family Justice provides care and services to victims and survivors of domestic violence, sexual violence, human trafficking, and child abuse. In six towns, Fairfield being one of the towns that we serve, the Fairfield component is over four percent of our client base. Last year, we served two hundred and forty-one clients from the Town of Fairfield. And during the pandemic and going forward and into this fiscal year, we have had a thirty-two percent increase in domestic violence and sexual violence cases. People were stuck at home, couldn't get away. They were in the house with the abuser, and they had no relief, and things would just spiral out of control. We've had, last year, in the last fiscal year, six children from Fairfield received forensic interviews at the center because they have alleged sexual abuse, either by a relative or someone within their family circle. We've had seventy-four Fairfield residents who we have served who were victims of domestic violence, thirty-five Fairfield residents who were the victims of sexual violence. And we have a legal program called the Probonal Legal Center within our Family Justice Center, where we have two attorneys on staff who represent clients at no, obviously, no cost to the client in civil cases. And we had twenty-three Fairfield residents who received those services also. So over the year, in the last fiscal year, in total, we served over fifty-five hundred individuals who came, who were victims and survivors of, as I said, domestic violence, sexual violence, human trafficking, and child abuse. Makes a huge difference to us to have this funding. Fairfield, as I said, is the third highest number of people who come to us. We serve six towns, Bridgeport East in Fairfield, Monroe, Stratford, and Trumbull. And the third number, highest number of people come from the Town of Fairfield. So any support you can give us to maintain our services and assist these people is most appreciated.
Thank you, Maggie. Appreciate that. Lori, would you like to share?
So I am not prepared in the way that what Maggie just presented and realized. This will be an opportunity to go back and sort of pull out cul data specific to Fairfield. I started at Jewish Senior Services about four and a half months ago. What I do know from the time that I've worked there is that the funding that comes from this CDBG program has helped the Center for Elder Abuse Prevention sort of continue to do the work that it does despite the fact that not a lot of people know about the issue and the difficulty that, in the same way, I don't know the name of the woman that spoke about the little kids and what they suffered through COVID, but it's on the other end of the spectrum. We have senior citizens who depend on the people who may be the people that are causing them harm, or it could be a family member or a caregiver. Caregiver, it could be financial abuse, sort of taking advantage of people, and either a lack of awareness or the inability physically to do anything about it. So I know that this funding has been applied specific to the center, and I know that the work that we want to undertake this year is really getting out, getting out, not in front of it, but letting people know, letting physicians know, letting senior centers know, letting them know that we are a program here to specifically serve senior citizens that are at risk of physical abuse. It could be sexual abuse and financial abuse, which is a growing, a huge growing problem. We are, well, this is not news to anybody. It's just been very, and it's difficult to get and hire and maintain a staff, a cohort of staff, that will be consistent with the folks that we serve. And so that's a problem, too, like you. Anyway, so the money will be specifically applied for that center. And if there is another opportunity to sort of do a deeper dive and come back and present you with data, I would like the opportunity to do that. I, too, am taking the place of somebody who did this job for like ten years. So I'm like, I'm learning on the job, basically.
Lori, great. Don't worry about it, and feel free to put that information in the application, because all that data is very helpful for us, so that we can better articulate the needs that we're seeing within the community and all of you are seeing within.
In terms of this process, is it, do we then come back in May and speak again? Is that how it works?
Certainly can. We will do the best that we can to honor all the requests that we receive. Typically, again, we'll get more requests than we have funds for, but we'll do our best to try to, again, meet the needs as best we can with the resources we have. But there is that opportunity in May, after we've kind of made some preliminary recommendations, as it begins to go through the approval process, to get each of your feedback and the feedback from the general public in terms of those allocation decisions. So there will be another opportunity, for sure. And feel free to, again, reach out to Sonia as you go through the process. If you have any questions. For those of you who may be new to the process, it's not a terribly complicated application. But again, if you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out to Sonia or myself. I think we also have somebody joining us, Grace Pascale. I believe you're joining us.
Hi, yes. I am filling in for Mary Ellen McGuire from Bridge House. So Lori, I think I may be even more unprepared as you. Mary Ellen's actually, she's on another webinar for an appropriations public hearing in Hartford. So I'm jumping in to present basically how grateful Bridge House is for the funds that they received last year from the Town of Fairfield. I believe last year it was thirty-five hundred that they received, and they actually have nine members that live in Fairfield. So the funds are greatly appreciated, especially as every organization that's presented before me. The pandemic really did take a toll on Bridge House and our members. For those of you who aren't familiar with Bridge House, it is a clubhouse that's located in Bridgeport, and it is a clubhouse for adults living with mental illness. And what they do is assist with getting members housing, assist them with jobs, finding jobs, keeping jobs, job training, just helping them with all the basic things that many people who don't suffer from mental illness do every day to function as adults in society that can be extremely difficult to do on your own when you're also battling mental illness or living with mental illness. So I do know those funds are very much appreciated by Bridge House, and especially the nine members who do live in Fairfield. So thank you.
Thank you, Grace. And I don't know, Herb, you're a member of our Affordable Housing Committee. You joined us, also a member of our community in the public. So I don't know if you had any thoughts you wanted to share, or you're just here to observe. And this is always a good learning process, because we always find out a lot about the inner workings of many of these very worthwhile organizations that are serving our community and about the good work that they're doing and some of the needs they're seeing. Always come to these meetings and ask to hear that.
Yeah, I've come to observe, but just very, very quickly. So I'm one of the seven members of the Affordable Housing Committee, and we just developed a new plan with Mark's assistance and the assistance of a consultant in May of two thousand twenty-two, and we're now working that plan. But we have a lot to do, and we're going about to do all we can to try to find affordable housing and also, you know, other budget-friendly housing solutions that work for Fairfielders and others. Separately, I'm also coordinating director of a group called Fairfield Senior Advocates. It's active in terms of trying to protect seniors and find and keep seniors in our town and state. And we work at the legislature in Hartford and also on the town level. Great to be here and online with all of you.
Thank you, Herb. I will open it up for any other questions or closing thoughts. I'll go around the room here. If anyone has any questions to ask of either Sonia or myself, any, and I'll go online now and ask the same thing if there are. Any, and I'll go online now and ask the same thing, if there are any questions or closing thoughts before we close the public hearing. I muted yourself, so. Okay, well, I, well, I, on behalf of Sonia and myself, we really do appreciate all the work that you do. We appreciate your being here, either in person or online. We know you're all very busy, as we all are these days. And we do really want to thank you for taking some time out of your schedule to share with us your thoughts and provide some feedback with respect to our Community Development Block Grant Program. Again, if you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out to Sonia or myself in the office. You know, the applications are due the 13th of March. Again, if you don't already have an application, Sonia can mail one to you, or, you know, email one to you, rather. But again, thank you again for, for coming, for participating, and hopefully we'll be in touch. So with that, I will close the public hearing at 6:31 PM.